Yeah, the add-ons.
Yeah.
We've got water.
Chair Kurt. Vice Chair Porter. Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Du. Commissioner Marsh.
Our first items are the invocation applied by Commissioner Huber. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to live and work in a democratic society and participate in governmental process. Help us make good decisions that will benefit the city of Victorville.
Second. Oh, you, I thought that was a motion. You're making a statement. I move that the minutes of our last meeting be approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Du with a second by Commissioner Huber to approve the minutes of the April 11, 2018 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the April 11, 2018 regular meeting of the Planning Commission have been approved with Chair Kurt absent.
The next few items are public hearings. If you wish to speak during any of these items, would you please fill out these white cards and give them to the secretary so that we can have fill your name correctly and how to contact you. Item is a public hearing. That is supposed to be continued. But we'll open the public hearing on item number one and ask if anyone wishes to speak to item number one. There being no response, I'll close the public hearing and move to continue this item to July 11, 2018.
I get it.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Huber to continue case PLN 17-00031 to the regular planning commission meeting on July 11, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurt absent.
The next public hearing, agenda item number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. Item number two is case PLN 16-00009. It is a vesting tentative track map to allow for the development of a 72 lot, single-family residential subdivision on 20 acres. This is located on the northwest corner of Fuchsia Lane and Dos Palmas Road. The proposed subdivision will result in a density of 3.6 units per acre. It generally complies with the city's single-family design guidelines and complies with all Title 16 requirements. What's before you is a vesting tentative map, so it would lock in the land use requirements the city has in place that when this project was deemed complete. So we wouldn't be able to change any standards until the vesting status is removed, and that normally occurs a year after the map records. So with that, there was one change that was just brought to my attention. If this could be read into the record if the Planning Commission wishes to approve this project. Engineering condition number 73. I'd like to amend that condition to read, to add the word temporary. It currently reads, "A cul-de-sac shall be required at the westerly end of Dos Palmas Road as determined by the city engineer." We would recommend in the city engineer agrees that it should read, "A temporary cul-de-sac shall be required at the westerly end of Dos Palmas Road as determined by the city engineer." And with that, staff is available if you have any questions.
Then I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone wishes to speak to agenda item number two.
Good evening, Vice Chair Porter, members of the commission. Beau Cooper, I'm the entitlement manager for United Engineering Group, here representing the property owner tonight. I just wanted to thank Scott Travis is our case planner and their diligence getting this pushed through to the end with our dealings with Caltrans and all the fun stuff that comes along with that. And as well as Mr. Gangler, amending the condition number 73. All the other conditions we have reviewed, we have no objections, and I'm available to answer any questions.
No questions.
Thanks.
There any further testimony on this item? And I will close the public hearing and ask for...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Du to approve case PLN 16-00009 with the amended condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurt absent.
Agenda item number three. Public hearing.
Yes, Madam Chair, item number three is a site plan to allow for the construction of an approximately 1,500 square foot drive-through restaurant. This is located at the northeast corner of Mojave Drive and Village Drive. Due to the timely submittal of the of the water quality management plan, it was just recently submitted, so we don't actually have all of the conditions prepared at this point, but it should be ready for your action at the June 13 meeting, so we recommend that you continue this item to June 13.
I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak to agenda item number three? There being none, I will close the public hearing and move this item to June 13.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Huber to continue case PLN 17-00005 to the June 13, 2018 regular planning commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurt absent.
Agenda item number four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number four is case PLA N 18-00027. It is a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the renovation and conversion of an existing motel into an affordable multifamily housing complex to be designated for those suffering from chronic homelessness and an amendment to the underlying desert gateway specific plan with an environmental exemption to permit multifamily housing within the commercial land use designation of the desert gateway specific plan. This is located at 16959 Starter Wells Road. Just for some housekeeping purposes and to put on record, there was some add-ons that were handed out. There was four letters of opposition that were submitted, and then those were just from the surrounding property notices. And then there was one letter from Caltrans which had no comment. To give a brief overview of the project, the existing Queens Motel is the subject site, is currently a 60-unit motel that was originally built in 1967, has come under some disrepair over recent years. The Housing Authority wishes to convert it to a permanent supportive housing. Representatives from the Housing Authority and the Department of Behavioral Health are here today, and there is a PowerPoint that they'll go through the programs that are offered there and what the housing will entail. I want to stick strictly to the land use component of it and answer any questions you have. But the conversion will convert it to a 31-unit apartment complex. There will be 24 one-bedroom units and seven studio units. And the facility will be renamed as Desert Haven. There will also be a community room. The laundry room will be converted. Also, an office for managers' unit as well. The site is located on a 3-point, I'm sorry, a 1.34 acre site. And so currently, the specific plan only allows for multifamily in a mixed-use setting where housing would be located above a commercial storefront. The amendment this proposed would allow for multifamily housing also on the ground floor on sites that are less than two acres in size. Given that the commercial zone of the specific plan is aimed towards providing typical locations for automobile-oriented retail and commercial services, we felt that it would be, it's needed to put a restriction on the size of parcels, so we don't expect to see a lot of more of these developments in the specific plan, but the provision, if this code amendments approved, a specific plan amendment's approved, it would allow for multifamily also on the ground floor. Given that there's already multifamily allowed within the zone and that this is an existing site, we do have it proposed as an environmental exemption, which is a general rule of section 15061. Through CEQA, that allows the commission to rule this as an environmentally exempt project. With that, we're available if you have any questions, and staff recommends approval as condition.
I will declare the public hearing open, and I see that there's a number of representatives, and are you going to do your PowerPoint first? I think it might be helpful because we have, I think we have questions, but you might be answering some of our questions.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Maria Razzo. I am the executive director of the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino. And we have a brief overview. Hopefully, won't repeat too much of what is in the staff report for you this afternoon, so I'll try to keep it short and give some time for you to answer, ask any questions of me. So there is some information in your staff report as to why the Housing Authority would want to invest millions of dollars in an affordable housing community specifically for those previously homeless within the city of Victorville. As you know, the number of homeless individuals continues to increase throughout the county and specifically within the top two cities. The city of San Bernardino having the highest number of homeless individuals per the last several years of homeless point-in-time counts, and the city of Victorville having the second highest number of homeless individuals within the latest several years of homeless point-in-time counts. So we are here, the Housing Authority, we've been in the county for almost 80 years, and we've been a committed partner to all of our cities and communities in addressing affordable housing needs for all of our families. As you know, there is a need for affordable housing, and individuals and families struggle to pay market rent. Some of those now in the current market rate conditions despite being employed. So Desert Haven will be a new revitalized housing development, not a homeless shelter. This new revitalized site will help eliminate existing community blight and improve the surrounding area overall. There are some additional points I wanted to highlight in the PowerPoint presentation. I have this here, thank you. So again, our commitment is to assist all of the cities within our jurisdiction, the County of San Bernardino, specifically those cities with the highest numbers of homeless within their jurisdiction. We are here to provide opportunities and resources for those individuals and families to achieve an enriched quality of life and to build communities and to change lives. Our Housing Authority is one of only 1% of housing authorities across the country that has a special congressional designation called Moving to Work. We are monitored very closely by both Congress and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I was actually in DC last week speaking with our head representatives and our congressional members and staff, and shared the fact that we are looking to open our first permanent supportive housing site in the city of San Bernardino this fall, and that this Desert Haven community will be the second in the county here in the city of Victorville. The communication was extremely positively received, and I also had conversations with the VA, the Veterans Administration. We're looking at providing a carve-out of units for our veterans. I am the mother of a Marine, so we want, that's a focus, has always been a focus for our families and our programs. We do have a preference for all of our programs for veterans, and we're looking to be able to house veterans at this site as well. So again, this repeats the information in terms of we're looking to convert the currently dilapidated Queens Motel into a multifamily housing development. Scott mentioned the items that would be included in the post-conversion redevelopment. Some questions that we anticipated you may have. All residents will sign a lease agreement. It's just a multifamily housing development. We see it as any other housing development that we have within our over 3,000 housing developments. It will be gated and a secure property. It will be a private property with no solicitation of homeless services. No loitering will be permitted and no meal prep or drop-in style services. Just a brief overview of our partners. We have a continuous and engaged partnership with the Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Proactive Enforcement Team that works directly with homeless within the community, specifically who are working within the city of Victorville, with United Way 211, the Department of Behavioral Health, and Dr. Bellford is here from the Department of Behavioral Health, if you have any questions for her. Our workforce development providers as well with the county's workforce development department. We have a longstanding research-based partnership with them, and we're also in continuous conversations with Good conversations with Goodwill to provide also additional employment services. Some of the onsite services that will be provided specifically through the county's Department of Behavioral Health, some examples will be onsite case management services with a variety of other partners as well, mental health services, behavioral health education and outreach, and substance abuse services. Examples of other onsite services that will be provided onsite include physical health services. I actually just left a meeting with IHP to make sure that we have services for those that have physical health issues. Employment services, as I had mentioned, life skills, and linkage to legal services. Some other examples of onsite communities will include community meetings and other social engagement opportunities. I mentioned the research. Because we are a Moving to Work Designated Agency, we have a longstanding partnership, excuse me, with Loma Linda University, who does our third-party research. We will endeavor on doing longitudinal research at this site, along with the site that we will be opening in the city of San Bernardino. Because we are a research-based housing authority, we endeavor to continuously learn and shape our programs in a positive manner to make a positive difference in the lives of our families. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, I would like to ask the Director a couple of questions. I think in our workshop you indicated that Victorville ranks in the top five as it relates to homelessness in San Bernardino County.
Correct, number two.
Number two?
Yes.
Okay. And you are aware that there are approximately thirty-one municipalities within San Bernardino County?
Correct, twenty-four cities.
Okay. So, with that said, do you have projects such as this elsewhere within San Bernardino County?
We have affordable housing throughout the entire county of San Bernardino, and we have scattered-site supportive housing for homeless as well, in partnership with the Department of Behavioral Health. We actually have hundreds of scattered-site units throughout the county. Golden Apartments will be the first onsite supportive services development, and that will be within the city of San Bernardino. The reason that we selected the two cities and worked with public officials within those two cities, and with HUD, and with Congress, and identifying the cities that we would embark on this endeavor, were the cities that had the highest, continuously the highest numbers of homeless residents within their city.
I guess you have another expert on homelessness, and maybe I can ask the question of that person. What are the contributions to homelessness?
Well, we have Dr. Belford here, who can, I can chime in initially. So, based on the research that we have seen that Loma Linda University has conducted for us, there are a variety of reasons. Those that rise to the top are mental health issues, but right now, one of the issues that's growing at an increasing pace is just affordability of affordable housing, just living paycheck to paycheck, and having one incident where they can't pay the full rent or they fall behind, that causes homelessness, and then they may lose their job. We have a lot of cases where homelessness causes them then to lose their job because of, you know, they can't shower, and then they lose their job, and it's just a cycle, unfortunately. So, what we're looking to do, as with other programs, is even though this is a permanent supportive housing site, we want to make sure that all of the families and individuals that we assist, that we give them a chance. So, that's what we would want our neighbors to do for us and our community, is let's give them an opportunity to succeed, and to make a positive difference, not just in the lives of them, you know, not just in their lives, but to be a community member, and to be able to give back to the community as well in a positive manner. I participated in the homeless point-in-time count this January, and I met several individuals that could have been my brother or my mother. There was a single mother who, she came about hard times and had several, you know, incidents that occurred to her that led to her homelessness. Her dad's a doctor at Loma Linda University, and she just needs help, and she needs something like Desert Haven to be able to assist her.
If you don't mind, I'd like to speak with the resident expert on a couple of specifics.
I feel really tall right now. Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Alice Belford. I work for the County Department of Behavioral Health. I oversee all of the homeless and employment programs that cover all of San Bernardino County, and I'll answer whatever I can.
Well, my question number one, what is the success rate as it relates to homelessness?
We don't have specific numbers on success rates. I have anecdotes.
Okay.
I can tell you, also as a sister of a homeless person who I lost fifteen years ago, the great part about this is that I think the illusion is that when folks are homeless, they don't want housing, that they are difficult to work with, and that they prefer to stay in the washes, and that if we bring housing, that they're going to come to these cities in order to get those services. That's just not the case. What we're seeing, actually, is that people become hopeless, and once they see us come out on a regular basis, it takes a long time to engage folks. We don't just bring people into these housing projects that we pluck off of the street. It's a process that happens. We actually go through a long paperwork, a long engagement process. We talk to them. We find out, what are your hopes and dreams? What are your goals? How did you get here? And what can we do to help you reach those goals? After we meet with them on numerous occasions, it's about twenty times before they even get to the process of permanent housing, and we have to do a lot of paperwork around verifying who they are. Have they actually been homeless for the time periods that they say that they've been homeless? Get identification, all of those things. They get placed on a list to get the housing. They build relationships with our staff, and what we find is the stories of people who say things like, "I had no idea people cared." "I didn't know. I gave up." And once they get into the housing, it's not a place for them to just sit and relax. We actually increase the accountability for them. They don't get to sit at home and do nothing. There's requirements for them. We want you to get up, and we're onsite to help them do that, the case managers, licensed clinical social worker. We want to, we want to help you get out into the world and become a productive citizen. Folks may be on social security. It doesn't mean they can't work. We want to get them employed. We send them to employment classes. We train them how to socialize in an employment setting. These are folks who may have been homeless for quite some time, and they forget the norms of what it's like to be in a workplace or in a setting even like this. And so, we side-by-side walk with them and teach them how to do that. So anecdotally, I don't have specific numbers for you on what success is, because we don't have a definition of what that means. But for us, a person who maintains housing, who has less recidivism into homelessness, maybe medical complications, maybe psychiatric hospitalizations, substance abuse, whatever their thing is, that we see less occurrence, that to us would be considered a success.
And Doctor, I don't know how familiar you are with the High Desert as a whole, but within the High Desert, we have, one, two private prisons in the city of Alantio. We have a county prison in the city of Alantio, and then the city of Victorville has a federal prison. But primarily, I've heard individuals indicate that it's strongly suspected that once people are released from prison, that they find it necessary to live on the streets of Victorville. Can you speak to that? Is that something that's true?
I don't, I don't have numbers to prove that. In general, my history is working with the Department of Corrections outside of the county. I've been employed with an agency that was a contractor. In general, there should be discharge planning that takes place, and folks in general return to their city of residence. Happens to be, the city of San Bernardino seemed to be the largest numbers, not necessarily Victorville. And then again, I don't have statistics on that for you.
Thank you. I yield back, Madam Chair.
I don't know my questions will be answered.
The one, did you say that there's going to be a manager there at all times?
Yes, onsite manager.
Oh, so, okay.
Yes, they will live there.
And, and once they, they get established, do they, do you have them pay a certain amount? You know, and I don't mean all of it, I mean, but a little bit, just so that they're productive?
Yes, there is a minimum rent at the community. It will be one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Yes. And then it will be an income-based rent. So as they become employed, then they will be, pay a percentage of their earnings towards the rent.
Now, are there kitchenettes in these apartments?
Yes.
And I understand that there is bus service that's fairly close, that exists right now.
Yes, it's extremely close.
So that they have a way to get groceries and their necessities?
Yes, extremely close, yes. And, excuse me, our architect is here as well, if there are any technical questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak to this?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Chohon, and I am the owner of the next-door hotel, Hill Topinand Suite, which is right next door to this project, and I do oppose this project. Reason is that this kind of facilities should be, you know, this exit started Wells Road, it's kind of a middle of nowhere, and there is no grocery stores and no nothing. So in that case, these kind of people who are going to stay there, they might not have their own transportation or something. In that, that case, they will start disturbing the, you know, surrounding businesses like us. You know, they will be start going, knocking on our doors, you know, hotel room doors, asking for favors, asking, you know, transportation, and that will be kind of creating a disturbance in that area. So I do oppose on that grounds.
Do you fill out one of these?
No, I haven't filled it out.
Would you do that for the Secretary, please?
I will, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I know typically this would be out of order, but could San Bernardino address his concerns? Or is forgetting?
Sure. Just to address the issues, so, we have case managers onsite, and one of the jobs of those case managers is to do side-by-side coaching. First of all, when a person comes in, they may not know how to grow grocery shopping, that's a fact. So our case managers will transport, we do have vehicles to do that. We'll transport them to the grocery store, we're going to help them with money management. We'll actually walk up and down the aisles with them to show them, look, you got fifty dollars, this is what you can afford, this is what you can't afford, let's talk about how to make that money work for you, load it back into our vehicle, and take them back to the site. There's a large accountability that takes place when there, when there are oversight by our case managers and our social workers. So it's, it's, again, a side-by-side process, where we want to teach them to be independent. Now, when they first get there, there may be some that need more than others. If we need to walk with them every single day, we'll do that. Sometimes they, that, that need lowers, and it becomes once a month. But in general, we will, at minimum once a month, have those side-by-sides with them in conversations to make sure they're on track. So, there is an accountability for them, and again, a side-by-side coaching that takes place with things like groceries, job searches, all of the things that would, you and I would do on a day-to-day, that maybe they need added support for. We do provide that as part of our commitment.
I just, Madam Chair, if I could, I thought I wrote down that there are approximately thirty-one, well, how many dwellings do you have in this hotel? Thirty-one. Then I wrote it down correctly. And how many, what's the, what's the ratio of staff to monitor these people, either eight hours a day, twelve hours a day, or twenty-four hours a day?
So, in general, it's about one to fifteen.
One to fifteen, that's the ratio. Thank you. I yield back.
Yeah, I do have one question. As far as, as far as, because of the surrounding communities, now I understand it's going to be gated, this, this structure is going to be, it's going to be a gated facility. Is, is there going to be twenty-four-hour security, onsite security? Or is it kind of like an honor system?
Twenty-four-hour security, security cameras, yes.
But physical, but physical security, like a security personnel?
Initially onsite, physical security, and then we'll determine the need as time goes on, but there will also be security cameras onsite as well.
Anyone else wish to speak to this subject?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to our opinions on this matter, but I'm one of the neighbors, my name is Randy Johnson, I'm one of the neighbors that just invested into Victorville's, not only in the property right next to the, the area that they're discussing, but also in other places within Victorville and Apple Valley. I'm opposed of this project. I understand that the homeless people do need a place to be, but not out, as this gentleman had mentioned, in the middle of that area. There's nothing out there. There's a couple of gas stations, a motel, and a little diner. And ever, other than that, there's nothing else out there. I understand these people need to be seen medically or, or be supervised, but once that eight-hour day, they're, they're not. They're there. They're going to start abusing the area, and I'm definitely against it. I just think that this particular project needs to be more centrally located within the city than out in the outskirts of the, of the desert, and that's why I think that this project is not a very good project to go with. Thank you.
There any further testimony?
Yeah, we're a little out of order here, I apologize. I'm the architect, working for the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino. Just want to make a couple of comments pertinent to the physical improvements that are being proposed here. I do want to remind everybody and the public that there is going to be a, an improvement of a specific fence around here, and the fence that's around the property isn't intended to be anything more than a way for the property manager, the onsite property manager, to control who's coming and going from the property. It's not intended to keep the residents in, it's not intended to keep the public out. It's, it's a way of controlling the access to the property, and I think over time, that's the most important thing. There are many multifamily communities that rely on such control, and really, it is important to think of this as a residential complex. In the long term, what it really is, is an apartment complex that happens to have these wraparound services for a group of tenants who can benefit from that. So, this is not an institution, this is not anything but an apartment complex for folks that need a little extra help and will have it onsite. So I think that's the important way to think of it, and because, because it was mentioned earlier that the services onsite are specifically for the residents, and in no way, shape, or form are intended to serve anybody who doesn't live there, it's not like people are going to be arriving, parking, participating in services, and then leaving. There won't be people coming at night, or anything of that sort. There won't be people coming at night or anything of that sort. Again, realize that it's going to be an apartment complex. And I think that just needs to be stressed. The other, the other critical thing to consider with regard to the physical plan of this proposal is that it is this dilapidated motel at present. And what we're proposing is what's known in the industry as an adaptive reuse. We are taking an existing property, an existing improvement, and we're reusing it for a more modern situation, both economically and socially. So it's, it's reusing this old structure, it's, you know, this, this ticks all the boxes for sustainability and what have you. So it's a very efficient use of resources to achieve the, an improvement for the community. Generally, this type of project has been done before, my firm has been associated with some of them already, and, and they're generally perceived to be a win-win for the community because you're taking something that's been a draw on your city's services, both with police, fire, et cetera, something that's been a drain on your resources and turning it into a positive and solving a, an important problem. So I just wanted to point those things out. If you do have any questions about the, you know, physical characteristics of this proposal, please feel free to come back to me. And to the chair, I, there are a couple of housekeeping items with regard to the conditions that I'd like to have an opportunity to address if we reach that point in the conversation. Thank you.
Have you just discussed them with staff?
Uh, no, not at this time. They're relatively straightforward, so I don't know if you would like me to propose them now, or?
Yes, we, we need to.
Sure, okay. Let me just pull up the right page. Okay, so with regard to, these are with regard to the planning conditions specifically. Number nine includes a solid roof cover over the trash enclosure. I just want to make sure that it's understood what that means, and to see if there's any flexibility along that point. We can return to that, I'll just list through these. Item 16 states the project requires connection to the Victorville water distribution system. I, I'd just like to maybe sub the word requires for, has an existing connection, because of course, it is an existing motel, a pre-existing structure. And then similar on item 17, the project has an existing connection to the city sewage collection system. This is not to say that these won't require work or repair, at this point I can't tell you, but...
Those are standard, those are standard conditions that we put in all of them, so...
I just...
If you already have it, then it's not a problem, you don't have to comply, you've complied with it already.
As, as long as that's understood, I wouldn't want there to be some indication or future reading of this condition that we're at, that we need to add a new connection, that's all. So...
Well, if I can make clarification, the implication with that condition is that current standards will need to be met, both for the sewer connection and the water connection.
Absolutely.
I don't know the specifics, but that's the intent.
Sure, and that makes perfect sense, of course. I don't know if there's just an opportunity to clarify the language, because obviously if we don't want to add a new service, if we're already, that, that's part of the, the characteristic of this, that we can take advantage of some of the existing improvements. So, is, are we comfortable?
And number nine is standard also.
I'm sorry?
The, the trash enclosure is standard also.
Okay, so that's, that's a local ordinance, that is absolutely required. Okay, that's fine. Number 19 says a grading plan slash site improvement plan shall be submitted to the development department, and then related to that is item 20, a geotechnical report shall be submitted with and incorporated into the grading plan. There is no mass grading or significant grading proposed as part of this project in any way, shape, or form, so I'm wondering if we should clarify 19 and simply strike 20. And that is the extent of my comments.
The one regarding the grading plan is also a standard condition, and it generally pertains to, if, even if there's reconstruction, it'd be pretty standard to have some kind of soils information so that we would know what compaction requirements there would be, even if, even if there's parking lot reconstruction and so forth, or new curb gutter onsite. I don't know what the extent of that may be.
We, we do have some flatwork proposed, of course, that'll be new or replaced. As far as asphaltic paving of the lots, the whole site is essentially paved at present, and there are areas of it that we plan to restore with surfacing. So, yeah, I, I just, the geotechnical report, you know, we don't have any structural work going on, and we can certainly specify everything at the code minimum, you know, the lowest possible compaction or, or soil bearing pressure. It would save the project a considerable amount of money, because the geotech report is not otherwise stipulated here based on the improvements we're doing. So, I don't know if there's some flexibility there.
We, we could, we could add some kind of clarification language if you'd like, as required, or if, or if required.
That would be great. I think that would work well. Thank you. Yep. Any questions, or, we're good? Thank you so much, Commission.
Is there any further testimony on this item? Questions from?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to add a little bit of background on why this site was chosen from the larger city perspective, and it partially did address some of the, the valid questions raised by the two neighboring property owners. This site, when it was run as the Queens Motel, had numerous code enforcement violations and interactions with the police, ranging from substandard housing, hazardous electrical, hazardous plumbing conditions, raw sewage leakage, in the majority of the units prior to the Housing Authority taking, purchasing the property. The, the property is in disrepair, and from everything we've seen, what the, what the Housing Authority has planned to do will actually result in a compliant, safe and sanitary housing condition for that, for that particular property. And it, it, all indications, it will actually be an improvement to what was running there. They were also cited for running the property that was a hotel, more so like an actual apartment complex, not a, not a daily hotel. So I do want to add that when the Housing Authority did talk to city officials about a site, we helped them identify this site specifically to try to get a better project than what was existing there. So I just wanted to add that background for the Commission.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing, for what action the planning commission wishes to take.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend that the City Council find a specific pla, specific plan amend, amendment and site plan exempt pursuant to section 15061B and 3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And number 2, adopt resolution number P-18-025, attachment A, recommending City Council approval of the Desert Gateway specific plan amendment portion to case PLAN 18-00027, and adopt resolution number P-18-026, attachment B, recommending City Council approval of the site plan portion of case PLAN 18-00027, subject to conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Vice-Terr Porter to approve case PLAN 18-00027 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurth absent.
Project has been approved.
Madam Chair, item number 5 is case PLAN 16-00004. It is an extension of time request for a 563-lot, single-family subdivision located north of Cuesta del Sol and east of Village Drive. Staff has been working with the applicant and is hoping to have it all wrapped up and ready for you by the June 13th meeting. So staff's recommending that you continue this for one, one month.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Then I'll move to continue this item to June 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Second?
Second. Sorry.
We have a motion by Vice-Terr Porter with a second by Commissioner Du to continue case PLN 16-00004 to the June 13th, 2018 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurth absent.
Agenda item number 6.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 6 is the 11th continuance request of case PLN 16-00029. It is a proposed shopping center and parcel map located within Dunya Plaza. Staff is still waiting to receive the green light from the applicant. This is stalled on a civil issue between the applicant and the neighboring property owner regarding some easements. So they're still working on finalizing those easements and are requesting that you continue this item to the July 11th Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions? I'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 6 and ask if anyone wishes to speak to this. There being no response, I'll move to continue this item, hopefully for the last time, to July 11th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice-Terr Porter with a second by Commissioner Du to continue case PLN 16-00029 to the July 11th, 2018 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurth absent.
Agenda item number 7 was a scheduled public hearing, but they let it be withdrawn. So shall I open the public hearing and?
I understand you don't have to, you can just, you can just accept, accept the withdrawal.
I'll move that we accept the withdrawal.
We have a motion by Vice-Terr Porter with a second by Commissioner Du to withdraw case ADMN 17-00044. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with Chair Kurth absent.
Now we have public comments on planning matters. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak? And we're going on to agenda item number 8, which is the communications. School facilities needs analysis for Hispari Unified School District. Do you receive and file those, or just haven't ever really done anything with them?
Yes, it's, it's a time for, we want to put this on, it's not a requirement that we put it on the agenda, but it's a way for us to forward this information to the Commission. If there is comments that they, that the Commission may have, we can, we can give those to the school district.
Now we have Commissioners' reports.
You have a comment?
I do have a comment. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for cleaning up the city lot that is north of my property, because we had for so long. Thank you very, very much, I appreciate it. And I know it was expensive, they had a lot of expensive equipment out there, they had probably, they probably did 10 of those great big huge things full of debris and stuff. They should have never let whoever dumped all that stuff out there, just let it happen. You know, it was a contractor of some kind that did it. Anyway, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'll adjourn this meeting.
All right, y'all have a good evening. Okay. Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna duck my head and run. Have a good evening.
Have a good one.
I have to listen very carefully, that's the thing, like you can't only be thinking about one thing. I did say, I'm gonna be up all night. I usually don't drink coffee late in the day, but on my toes for this. Usually pretty...
Are you shutting us off?
Worry sometimes, because some things require a certain number of votes, I'm just checking and going, okay, are we gonna have enough for what we need? But we did, so no harm, no foul.
I think that they, they did.
Victorville bottled water, all right.
It was a good presentation.
It was a very good presentation. Oh, yeah, it answered a lot of problems that I thought might come up.